Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maximan.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received? This proposal is amended. Moving to second, any discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Aye.
Foes motion carried. Budget work session. Discussion, possible board action, consideration, law aspects of the fiscal nineteen Black Hawk County budget. Who we got up first?
Uh, we were gonna start with the sheriff, but I think he stepped out for a call, so we can do engineer since Kathy, uh, well, here comes Tony. Abby, can you put my screen up?
Yeah, we were gonna... Okay. Uh, so this is a summary of the sheriff's budget and the general fund. We've got a decrease in revenues of eighty-five thousand four oh three. Uh, you can see FY seventeen, uh, actual revenues were, um, uh, lower than that. We, uh, lower than what's requested this year, but we have seen a decline a little bit in the revenues. Um, expenses, salary and benefits, there's only a slight increase, and that is due to, um, the continued transition to civilian, um, detention officers instead of deputies. Um, we're also looking at a, uh, a decrease in operating expenses. Um, and if you look on the account detail, you can see, um, the decreases were in food, uh, the major decreases, health and, uh, health services, and those are both based on the contract. There was also the decrease because of the elimination of the edex fees. And then, um, capital, that, that huge decrease is due to the jail security. We had a million dollars in there last year. Um, in rural basic, um, we just have salary and benefits. That's for patrol. Um, and that increase is due to, um, the, uh, health insurance increase plus the, uh, step increases in unit five and then the across the board, and that's why that's, uh, a little higher at seven percent. Um, so I will let Tony talk more in depth about, about his budget.
What are your questions? Um, no, I think, uh, when you look at county government, this is what you wanna see, is it not? Trying to be creative, try and manage your staffing, meet your obligations, be as effective, and yet as efficient as possible. Um, it's taken nine years to get to the point where we are today, and I'm, uh, I'm pleased to give you this budget. I would be remiss if I didn't once again, as I do every year, uh, beat you up about staffing. Uh, you see in our annual report that the jail continues to hold more forcible felons than we've ever held. Our, uh, daily population and our, uh, inmate census continues to go up. Um, and now we're not holding just the town drunks anymore. We're holding those folks that have nothing to lose, uh, because they're all facing fifty years to life. And as we, uh, continue to evaluate what other needs might be out there, one or two more bodies as we continue to save money on the, uh, on the salary and benefits side would be beneficial to us. However, uh, the budget that's submitted does not reflect that. It's just a talking point and a contemplation point for you.
Are you done with the transition?
No.
Of civilians?
We're not. Slow through attrition, and, uh, it's been quicker, quite frankly, than I thought it was gonna be. I was thinking we would go five to seven years, and we're probably gonna go closer to three years. So, we're probably halfway there.
So that staffing adjustments would be in the civilians with civilians or?
Correct. Yeah, we just want bodies. Bodies that help us eliminate overtime and again. There's no strong corollary to say the amount of money expended in overtime far exceeds the amount of money, you know, that it would cost you for a body, but, um, operationally, bodies help us do our job and do our job more effectively.
You know, there was, notice there was a decrease in the food budget, and I know we have C B M on the agenda, so...
We always, uh, we always estimate based on what's the worst-case scenario. Um, this year, for whatever reason, that, that, uh, contract just came in. Um, so I don't know if they're getting a little better about getting them out in a timely fashion, but, uh, we always estimate on the worst-case scenario, and we've done that for several years, and we've come in under the worst-case scenario.
You gonna be here Tuesday?
Uh, I believe I will.
Okay. Cause she just sent over the contract, but would it, there was no particulars or?
It, it's very straightforward. Again, it's-
One year, three years?
Uh, it's, it's a, a single-year extension. I think that's based on the base contract. Yeah.
Was there an increase?
Correct, three percent.
Yeah, see, that's, would've been, you know, she just sent over and put it on the agenda, and that was it.
It, there's a cover letter and the contract itself. It's, it's a, an addendum to that contract, so it's pretty straightforward. You're right, you may have to, you may have had to gone back and look at the base contract, uh, because it's a simple addendum.
So that's a yearly extension?
Correct. Yeah. We've been very happy. I, obviously, we've saved money with them, uh, but the quality of the service, uh, the quality of the food, um, not everybody's gonna be happy in jail with what they get, but, but, uh, we're giving them, uh, nutritionally sound and, and dietarily correct meals now, and, and we're happy with the, the level of partnership that we have with them. I don't know that there's too many hot rocks in this, in this budget, so...
The decrease in revenues?
I can't, we're just not a revenue generating entity.
Okay. Was that projected high in previous years and?
Yeah, well, it, it's been... I'll be very politically correct in my answer. Um, there have been years where our revenue has been fudged, uh, to the positive to try and help offset askings. Um, and not necessarily by me, but to make things balance and look right. Um, we have borne the, uh, uh, the residuals of that for several, several years. When I've made changes, again, over the last nine or ten years, um, those changes have resulted in positive results for revenue generation. The problem that I'm running into now is I've kind of plowed all the unplowed fields that I've been able to find. Um, so the maximizing of the benefits that I've been able to, or the maximizing of the revenues that I've been able to pull, um, we've kind of reached that fruition. And so, uh, the other piece of that, for example, uh, when I start barking that I'm gonna garnish wages and you owe us this money, and, you know, that bark is only as good as what little bite I have behind it. Um, there's not a lot of, uh, bite behind what I've got. So, uh, we work with the county attorney and their collections division more frequently now than we ever have to try and help stand some of those resources up. Uh, the state hasn't helped us with the five-year, uh, generation of permitting, uh, where every year it was, uh, almost a guaranteed revenue source. Now it's every five years. So you have that bald spot on the tire every five years it comes around. Um, so we're, we're seeing some trending that just, in the revenue side, just doesn't seem to be in keeping with, uh, uh, the way we've been budgeting against for the last five or six years. The last piece of it is, uh, quite simply, uh, crime is on the reduction. We're seeing fewer citations issued. We're seeing, uh, less generation on the civil side, and so it is kind of what it is.
Thank you.
So civil's done mainly by outside contractor, right?
There's more that is being done by outside contractor, but, uh, there's a lot that still has to be delivered by the-
How many vehicles do we have civil?
Five.
Do we rotate them every other year?
No.
Cause you, they, they just run during the day, right?
They have two shifts.
Like a squad car.
Two shifts.
What about investigation? How many we got?
Uh, five.
Do we rotate them every other year?
No, none, none of those get rotated. They get rotated almost every five years.
I mean, we're, we're buying them every year.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, so every other year, we are purchasing a vehicle, you're correct, for that division. Yeah. Most vehicles are on about a five-year rotation.
The one you, you get rid of, then how many miles are on it?
Between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty thousand.
And they're mostly in town?
They're, they're almost all in-town miles. For civil, for investigative, no, but the last civil vehicle that we rotated out, we actually gave to, uh, Kathy. Do you remember how many vehi, how many miles were on that Durango? Hundred and thirty?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty. So there was a slightly fewer miles on that one, and we, we gave that one to Kathy.
And you bought a new one and give that one to Kathy?
I bought a new one and replaced, uh, the one that we replaced, I gave to Kathy.
Get rid of that one, so that's on the books still.
But we have to buy every year?
I have to keep that, that cycle up, yes.
Did we create that when we started the cycle on the squads? Because we weren't doing the squad cars on a, a cycle.
It was twenty oh... It was right after I took office. We started replacing fifteen vehicles that were all purchased, I think, in two thousand and five. So we had this, all these cars that were failing all at the same time. And I think, right after I took office, is when we finally got that into a cyclical, uh, uh, rotation.
Are we all through our, um, uh, squad car patrol cars? What do we have left of the older ones?
Uh, you have none of those twenty-fives left, yeah. Yeah. Now we're rotating out Tahos and-
Tahos.
And Fords. Yep. And we are purchasing the least expensive patrol-rated vehicles that we can get. You'll see in the back lot right now that you've got kind of a mixture of, there's still a few Tahos that are in the process, so they'll be rotated out in the next few years. Those are the most expensive, uh, patrol platform out there. They didn't used to be when we bought them, but they are now.
Are you finding out they're more costly to fix?
No, um, and the resale value on the Tahos are better. Um, the Fords are causing us all kinds of troubles right now because they've got all these emissions issues and-
Mm-hmm.
So we're having a hell of a time with that. But, uh, uh, the charger that is the least expensive vehicle platform, I think we've got four in the fleet right now. We're having transmission issues with, it's a four, four-wheel drive or an all-wheel drive transmission, and we're having-
Did we have any trouble with the, um, exhaust on the Fords?
All of them. Yeah, I've actually bought, uh, CO2 detectors, uh, that are in the cars now because every single one-
They fix them?
Yeah, um, I don't know that we're completely fixed.
But was it for holes and stuff they were putting in?
No, that was a public story that I don't think is true. Um, at least not in our case, it's not true, and we are having-
The only other thing I see too, since sixteen, your fuel kinda went up quite a bit, and I'm assuming that's due to the Tahos compared to-
It's actually due to the Fords. The Fords get worse gas mileage than the Tahos by about four to five miles per gallon.
Why are you going back and forth on that? Why don't you stick with Tahos or?
Cause they're more expensive. When they weren't the most expensive, that's what we bought. Um, they get eighteen to twenty miles to the gallon, and they have a larger fuel tank. Uh, the Fords are less expensive by almost three grand, and they have a smaller, uh, fuel tank, and they get between fourteen and sixteen miles to the gallon. Uh, so, uh, I think it, I think the answer is yes. It's attributable to the platform that we're using, uh, but it's the least expensive vehicle platform that we can put them in.
Have you been able to chart that out over the life of the vehicle, whether it truly is a lower-cost vehicle or whether it's-
I haven't, compared to the co, yeah, I have not factored it against the cost of the-
Additional fuel costs and repair costs. Maybe you could look at that over-
I think the-
...the life of the vehicle and see whether or not it is truly-
Right. The repair costs were unanticipated based on what they recognized to be a flaw, uh, uh, an actual vehicular flaw from the factory that they are trying to fix. Um, we, if there were a class action lawsuit, we would be a part of that, uh, because, again, we've got twelve, maybe thirteen in the fleet. Um, and every single one of our vehicles, we've had to have in, um, for those issues. But, um, routine maintenance-wise, again, now that we've gotten onto this every five years, we're cycling that vehicle out, we don't have near the maintenance expenses.
Do they carry the three-year warranty as a squad car?
They, they carry a, a, a longer warranty than three. I think it's five or seven.
So you're rotating every five years?
Five to seven years.
Yeah, so maintenance on it shouldn't be much of a concern for us.
Other than the unanticipated recalls and things like that that we're going through right now.
That last one that was in the accident here a few weeks ago, was that totaled?
No, they're gonna fix it. It skinned the entire side, peeled the door skin off on the back, uh, where the dog sits and-
Was that newer one?
Yeah, uh, that was a twenty fifteen.
They're gonna fix it.
They're gonna fix it.
Is that, uh, is that the correct number under the bulletproof vest? It says one under-
Well, it's, uh, that's the total cost for the-
Thirty thousand gets us, uh, a fifth of our, uh, staff's vests and three SWAT vests.
Okay.
There's twenty members of the SWAT team, so we replace three SWAT vests and, uh, uh, a fifth of the department's vests every year.
Now, we've done that every year, right, Tony?
Correct.
Does that cost even, the numbers aren't there yet, but that cost go down going to the civilians? Do they wear them or?
They don't, although, although that was a point of dis, I just did a climate assessment survey, uh, on my staff, and that was actually a point that came up because bulletproof vests don't just stop bullets, they stop sharp objects. They, my deputy, my civilian staff still wear a star kind of uniform. They go to and from work, and they feel like maybe they oughta be considered for those. That's not a conversation that we've administratively had yet. Uh, it's not one that we're terribly entertaining of at this point, but, um, thankfully, the cost for vests have not gone down, or have not gone up. They've, they've remained steady, and the technology is improving. So, um, SWAT is getting ready to go to a different vest carrier that is gonna be a little less expensive for us.
So we get, what, fifteen every year, you say?
We get, yeah, uh, whatever the number is, uh, fifteen to twenty deputy vests, and then, um, three SWAT vests out of the twenty for the SWAT vests. And again, this is just because as you wear them, they break down. The fibers break down, so they're no longer warranted, and they no longer are anticipated to be able to stop a bullet.
And your safety equipment, tactical, I thought that was the vest, but no?
Um, well, that's a little bit of everything, I think, but, uh, when we, yeah.
Sorry, Tony.
I'm sorry. When you lump those two, they're both the same word, right? The same account?
It's, uh, oh-seven-six-three, which is tactical, or, no, let me spell, oh-seven-six-three is-
Well, six thou, three thousand is what a vest costs, so yeah, that's, that's what that six thousand is, uh, is indicating. That's a tactical vest.
If, if the city or the state were to be able to come up with more mental health beds, would that take off some of the burden of possibly the need for two more, uh, jailers?
It's tough to quantify that answer with something that would make sense. Um, my, my simple answer to that would be yes, simply because that's what I've been spending eighty percent of my life in the last three years, trying to address and tilt, uh, the windmills that are out there. Um, as you know, our jail population represents somewhere between thirty and sixty percent mentally ill. Um, most of those folks are here because they've commit, all of those folks are here because they've committed crime. The question really lies, then, in was the crime committed because they're mentally ill, or did the mental illness contribute to why they committed crime? Um, depending on perspective with regard to that, obviously, um, we'll end up, where do they end up being placed, or how do we divert, or how do we, um, how do we prevent crime, uh, from occurring by better access, better infiltration, better, uh, support systems, all of those things that we're trying to establish through the complex needs, mental health task force that I sit on, stepping up program, the, um, the state efforts, the United Way efforts. Um, if we could better control the types of people that come to jail, the answer, I think, is yes. The problem that I have with telling you yes is, right now, I'm not sure that all of the violence that is occurring can be easily attributable to mental illness. And that being true, um, a lot of the symptomology that I'm trying to address with bodies, uh, doesn't go away just because we get rid of some of the mentally ill that are in jail.
Okay.
Are the, um, uh, two-part-time commissary, and then I believe it'd be the network administrator, are they still under your fund that you're paying them?
Uh, I don't know about Brian. I think Brian got transitioned out.
No, he's still actually under the-
He's that forty-sixty?
-courthouse, yeah, room and board.
Um, that's not how commissaries pay though. Commissaries are paid from commissaries.
I know, but I mean, Brian's still under-
Non-tax-based entity.
Brian's under the room and board.
Non-tax-based funds, correct.
You have anybody out, um, uh, military?
I have one right now deployed to Afghanistan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, Tony? Any questions?
No.
I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Oh, can we hold on one sec? I do have, and I know this isn't, this is just, uh, Tony's commissary, but I guess I, I have a question. Tony, on, uh, let me pull up the commissary. Um, since we took over running the commissary, um, we have, um, had an excess of revenues over expenditures for several years, and that fund, and, fund has built up to, I think it's now four hundred and some thousand. Um, anyway, I just didn't know what, what we were able to spend those funds on, and if we're gonna continue to build up that fund, we need to look at-
It's codified that you have to spend those funds on things that directly benefit the inmate, and I think that is the verbiage in that, in that law.
So currently, it's paying for the two-part-time workers?
Pays for them. It pays for, uh, the vehicle that, the jail transport vehicle that you don't budget against, um, that comes out of commissary. All of their uniforms, their laundry soap, their paper products, uh, feminine hygiene products, all of those, uh, the, the cleansers and the cleaners and the building maintenance kinds of things, those are all paid for out of, uh, the commissary. So we, what we try and do is make the jail, to the degree possible, as budget-neutral as possible, because we can easily correlate a direct benefit to the inmate. Um, in the future, as that fund continues to build, in the back of my mind, anyway, I think that there's benefit and effacy to say, when it's time for tuck pointing, when it's time for a new roof, when it's time for insulation, when it's time for, uh, sewer pipe repair. I, I don't have the funds to be able to tell you, hey, we'll, we'll take that over. I don't have those, because, again, you can see the, the balance between what the expenditures are associated with, uh, the revenues. And we are outpacing expenditures, but not to the degree where we can take on large infrastructure projects like that. But, again, in the back of your mind, just keep, as we watch those funds grow, think about that verbiage of what can we testify to that is directly benefiting the inmate?
Are you paying for anything else, Tony, right now that you can think of, other than the ones we just mentioned?
Uh, out of the commissary fund?
Yeah.
Those are the major items that come to mind. I, I'm sure there's a ton of different things that come out of there. Uh, and again, we really do try to leverage that account for anything that's even a str, because sometimes even the, the patrol vehicle that is used to take somebody to the doctor, uh, from the jail, or to the dentist from the jail, um, that's being paid for out of, now, what we did is we transitioned a patrol vehicle that was ready to go away over to them. Um, but, uh, we were, were able to manage that fleet where, I, I, to answer your question, I, I can't think of anything substantial, um, other than the things that I've already indicated. And I do anticipate, as that fund continues to grow, being able to do infrastructure projects and things like that, as long as we can have the nexus between that, what the, what the law tells us has to be spent on direct benefit to the inmate. And I know building maintenance kinda manages, uh, where we are cyclically on tuck pointing, on roofs and major components of the building, that kinda thing.
So recently, when the ice machine broke down, I think Rory talked to, um, Tony about that, and we, we are gonna take that out of the commissary fund. But the balance in, as of, uh, uh, June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen was four hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um, so, and that continues to grow. So I guess we can have Rory work with Tony, but in the future, if we have things, then they-
And he routinely does. When something, especially when something emergently breaks, um, we, we work pretty closely on that. We've got some things that we know we would like to do that would ease maintenance, things like we've got the tile floors that are all causing us trouble, stripping them out and grinding them down to concrete, polishing the concrete to make it easier to maintain. Um, those kinds of ideas, uh, we just gotta make sure that we can articulate that there's a direct benefit to the inmate.
I, I think it's, the key is maybe not to look to spend it on something other we need to keep an eye on it, because looking at the different things that pop up overnight over there.
Yeah.
So it's good to have that, but at the same token, when she said you gotta kinda control it.
I'm prideful. Every account that I have is building. Every single account that I have, whether that's seized and forfeited, room and board, you know, we continue to build those funds to try and use those funds to offset what we're asking taxpayers to pay for. Um, so I'm prideful of that, and, and as I look at over the trending of the, the last nine or ten years, I'm prideful of where we are. The only account I didn't have that was increasing in, in revenue, uh, was K-9, and now I've got them into a process where we're doing that as well. So, um, our hope is that we continue to be able to be frugal, to be able to be efficient and effective, and, and still, um, uh, come to you with a very reasonable budget that, uh, maximizes the impact of those non-tax-bearing account, non-tax-based accounts.
I, I think it warrants keeping a watch. It's a, it's a good point.
Okay.
Thanks, folks. Okay, moving to secondary roads. And there's a lot of, a lot of information on this first summary page. Um, just looking at their, uh, budget in summary, uh, revenues, um, we've always been very conservative or, you know, conservative in basing our, um, revenues on the D O T estimates. Um, so the, the three main sources, or the, the two main sources of revenue, we have road use taxes, and then we have the transfers from the, um, rural basic and general basic funds. And so we're, we're only estimating, uh, a very slight increase in revenues. Um, expenses, we have a, a slight decrease in operating expenses. Um, there's a decrease in capital. Last year, we did a, a pretty substantial, we had the three motor graders and several trucks, I'd have to look back. Uh, and I'll let Kathy go through the detail of the capital. And then in their, um, capital construction budget, um, and that's completely based on the projects that they have planned for those years, and there's a slight decrease there. But looking back on the revenue, um, we base the road use tax revenue on the D O T estimates, um, that come out. And then the transfers, and I'm gonna pull up that spreadsheet. So the, the transfers from the general basic and the rural basic, um, there's a, a maximum amount that we can do. And so based on the property valuations this year, um, the maximum amount for the general basic is, um, nine fifteen. We have been doing the, uh, transferring that maximum amount, um, going back at, at least five years. Um, because the valuations didn't increase a whole lot this year, uh, the increase in that is only seven thousand from the previous year. Uh, the rural basic, um, there were a number of, in, in the last, like, five years, we, we were transferring ninety percent, except for one year, I think it was FY seventeen, when we increased it to ninety-five percent. Um, last year, we dropped it back to ninety percent because of the, um, we had been reducing our rural basic fund balance. We were, um, allocating too much of the commercial, uh, backfill to that, and so we kinda needed some, some, to keep some funds in there. So we dropped it back to ninety, um, because the valuations didn't go up a whole lot, and just looking at, when we looked at the sheriff, most of what goes into the rural is the, uh, sheriff patrol salary and benefits, and that went up seven percent this year. So I left it, um, currently at ninety percent, but that's kind of a decision that we need to make. Uh, is this what we wanna transfer? So overall, that would mean, um, just a, a nineteen-hundred-dollar decrease in what they received last year, uh, in those two, um, transfers.
Is your revenue showing up there as it's reflecting the, uh, gas tax monies?
Uh, oops, sorry. So the estimates from the D O T would include that, and I'm not sure how they develop their estimates, but-
But I mean, you show it up there in your, uh-
Yes. That comes through in, with our road use taxes. Um, I don't think, they don't separate it out like this is the increased amount or anything.
No, I can talk about that.
Yeah, okay. Um, so then looking just, you know, overall, and I'll let Kathy talk in detail, the operating expenses overall went down about forty-two hundred. Um, there was an increase in right-of-way, and, and all of these are just based on the projects that they have planned during the year. A decrease in construction materials and professional services. Um, they're estimating a decrease in fuel, um, and they can- fuel, and they can, I'll let Kathy talk about that, and then we can look at the capital in detail. So I want to get down just briefly to talk about the fund balance. So, over the past several years, and partially due to the increase from the gas tax, the fund balance in the secondary roads funds, fund has increased, I think, I'd have to go back several years, but, you know, it used to be around 2 million, and we've increased it. We ended at 631,700 with 4,369. We are currently estimating a decrease of about 496,000 for FY18. That would put us at 3.8 million, beginning in FY19. And then this current budget shows a decrease of 957,000, or about 958,000, bringing us down to 2.9. Included in that is inventory, and I think they have about 400,000 in inventory, so that's considered sort of non-spendable. So then you could back that out and be down to like 2.5 million. But we looked last year, talked to Kathy, just kind of looking at that 25% of expenditures, they can be down around the 2 million level in fund balance, and that would be a good, comfortable fund balance for them. So they still, looking at this, you know, have some excess funds, and we've talked about spending a little more of that, possibly spending it on the bridge that they're going to be doing. So I'll turn it over to Kathy, and she can talk in detail.
Thank you, Susan. Abby, I have a, could you put my presentation on? Before I go to my slides, I wanted to just briefly mention a few of the highlights that Susan had indicated on the budget highlight sheet. Just to explain, our overall operating expenditures are estimated to decrease by about $4,200, and that's just a little, little bits and pieces here and there. You'd have to go through the, on the next sheet where she gave you the full budget, you can see that there are some accounts that have gone up and some that have gone down quite a bit. But overall, we are decreasing our operating by $4,200. One of those accounts is our right-of-way, and we do expect to expend more money. In our right-of-way account, we are increasing that by $54,000. Much of this is attributable to our Grundy Road grade and pave project, where we're going to have to acquire right-of-way in Blackhawk County on, for the entire quarter. Grundy County, of course, will have to be acquiring right-of-way on their side of the road as well. So we do anticipate we will have to expend, we are increasing our right-of-way budget to buy that property. We are showing a decrease in fuel by $20,000, and some of this is attributable to the new fuel station at the Longfellow facility. We have estimated that we are, in FY17, we have saved approximately $20,000 by having this station. So we are seeing savings in our fuel costs due to more efficient vehicles, newer vehicles, of course, but also this, the gas tank, the diesel tank, excuse me, that is at Longfellow now. And then our capital is expected to decrease, and I'll go through that as well here. I just wanted to talk very briefly about our revenues, and I've had several questions lately about what's gas tax and what's not gas tax. Are we accounting for our gas tax in our budget? So there are two types of funds that primarily we receive the state gas tax to. The state gas tax is commonly referred to as the road use tax fund. That's primarily when a person buys fuel at the pump, here in the state of Iowa, it goes into the road use tax fund. There's also time 21, there's licensing fees, there's other fees that go into a big pot of money that the DOT, the state of Iowa, gives to us. We primarily receive that state money in two pots of money. The farm-to-market fund, which is the FM fund, 8% of the state gas tax goes into the farm-to-market fund, and that's split up among all the counties. Just the counties receive farm-to-market funding. The DOT is projecting that we will receive 1.314 million dollars in our FM account in FY18, excuse me, FY19. We, of course, are planning our projects. We do a five-year plan for you, for the state. We are allowed to borrow ahead in our FM account by up to three years. So just based on the projects that we have programmed, we're currently showing a negative balance of $742,000 currently. And like I said, we can use this FM money on FM routes. We can use this FM money to match federal money. We can use local money to match FM money. So it is pretty flexible.
Can I just make one point, Kathy?
Yeah.
So the farm-to-market fund does not show up on our books. So we do not track that here. It's not in our financial statements. It's controlled by the DOT and maintained there. But we, Kathy has, you know, she knows what her balance is, and, you know, they work with that. But it is not show up on our financials.
Right.
It doesn't run through the secondary road fund.
Quarterly, we receive updates from the DOT about how much is in our FM account, and that way we can program our projects. We know what sort of match, if we're taking that from our secondary road fund. We know what we need to match, for example, by keeping track of these separate accounts. Another source of funding that we receive is federal funding. All counties receive federal bridge money. Currently, this year, we are expected to receive $454,000 of federal aid in bridge money. We are allowed to save that money up to six years, and we've been saving that, some of that money for the Cedar Wopsey Bridge Project. At the federal fiscal year, which was October 1st, we were estimated to have a beginning balance of 1.478 million dollars. So that's how we're going to pay for some of the Cedar Wopsey River Bridge Project, as well as we have a large Finchford Road Bridge Project that I've told you about, that's a million dollars. We do receive other federal money, and that is competitive. We go to the RTA, or we go to the MPO, and we negotiate with our other neighboring counties, neighboring cities, and we typically receive maybe 800 to a million dollars a year. We don't receive money every year from the RTA or the MPO, but on average, maybe every other year, it's averaging about a million dollars a year, or 800,000 a year. So that's another source of funding for us that we can, again, match with this FM money, or we can match with our secondary roads fund.
That's a county's portion of the federal fund?
Right, is the 454,000. And those are, two funds are separate from this budget today. So the budget that we're talking about today is our secondary road fund. And, again, that's comprised of the road use tax fund, time 21 money, and also, like Susan just told you, the general basic fund money, as well as the rural basic fund money. And the rural basic and the general basic, as you know, those are the components that Blackhawk County citizens contribute to, to the road fund. So the secondary road fund is also what we call our fund balance. So it's our savings account, and it's constitutionally protected, can only be spent on roads and bridges and everything that goes into taking care of roads and bridges. Any questions on that? Okay. I just thought I'd give you a slideshow on our capital projects. They are numerous, and I know you probably have a lot of questions, so I just thought I'd go through each one individually and try to answer your questions as we go through. Our first item is a gas-powered digger breaker. It is similar to a jackhammer. This is requested by our surveyor. They currently are using a pickaxe and a hammer, and what this is primarily used for is, as you probably know, section corners, quarter section corners, that's monumentation that has been established many years ago. It's there in the ground. We do have to look for that monumentation, try and find that monumentation. For example, when we resurface a road, we're supposed to be recovering monuments, restoring those monuments. So this product, this digger, would be used to help dig down to those monuments that are several feet into the ground. And the surveyor has requested that it be a gas-powered unit, so this, the budget would be 5250. This would include some type of carrying case, so it can be stored in the vehicle. Any questions?
So right now, you use a pickaxe?
Yeah, a pickaxe and a hammer, and-
How long does it take them with a pickaxe? This is going to save them time, or?
Yeah, this should save time, and we're also, would like to work on a project where all the section corners, quarter corners, et cetera, that, on the gravel road system, we have a very limited, we have very limited monumentation that's been recovered and plotted and mapped. Our surveyor would like to expand that network and retrieve much more information on the gravel road system. We do anticipate that a summer intern could help us with this, do some of this manual labor. The next item would be a gas or a cordless hammer drill. It's also used by the surveyor. Again, it's useful in monumentation recovery, or, for example, when a surveyor has to install their metal pedestal or their documentation in the roadway, or X's have to be made on, for example, survey points, points of elevation. It's sometimes useful to have an X to mark the spot. A tool like this can be used to do this. They're currently just using a drill from, for example, Home Depot, where they're using the drill, and the surveyor tells me that that's worn out. They would like to budget for a cordless drill that has, that's more powerful, that has drill bits and a case, for example.
So this is actually replacing something, it's just a different type of-
Yes.
Product, okay.
So how many of these monumentations, section corners, you anticipate doing a year?
Well, like I said-
How many have we done in the past?
On an annual basis, I suppose we're probably looking at, we need to be doing it on all of our roadways that are resurfaced, so-
Right.
That could be possibly 20 to 30. Plus, as I've said, the surveyor would like to get better documentation on the gravel road system, and try and reestablish these monuments throughout the county.
You said we currently got one?
We currently have just a regular, like a homeowner's drill, that is about 10 years old, and the surveyor would really like to have a new one that is more powerful, that would have these, the drum, excuse me, the hammer drill bits, and it would also come with a case.
So they drill an X into where?
So it's not really a drilling process in that case. For example, if we need an elevation on the top of a, of a bridge, it's common for surveyors to place an X on top, in the concrete on this bridge, for example, and then that will be noted in the field book that X on a northeast corner of the bridge, this is the elevation. So this is one tool that the surveyor uses, as opposed to a grinder. He tells me he uses the drill to do this type of work, to mark X's into where they're taking elevations, or to cut off rebar, for example. We, we may, they may pound rebar into the ground and use that as a point for elevation during a project, for example.
You know, Kathy, going through, we've all gone through this list. What was your budget last year for capital?
So, well, back on the summary page, the FY18, this current year budget is 1,599, 000, and in FY19, they're requesting 985,750, so a decrease of 605,000.
Okay. And this money's coming from where, again, I think you probably told us already?
This is the secondary road fund.
Okay. And I guess the question, when we come to capital, even though you're going through all this, and we can see it, a lot of it's minor equipment that, you know-
Sure.
Probably isn't a big deal. Will you be asking the board for tax money for any projects?
No. Well, the revenue that they receive in the secondary road fund, as we, as Kathy and I were explaining, we have the road use taxes, or the main revenue that we receive, the road use taxes that they receive, and then the two transfers that we make from the general basic and rural basic. And so all the revenues, the 7,771 that they're projecting, cover all of their expenditures. And, of course, we're showing a decrease, or an excess of revenues over expenditures. Typically, this is, we always budget conservatively, so we always usually typically exceed the revenues and come in less than the expenditures, and so-
I understand where the money's coming from and everything. Is there any projects that we're going to fund with tax dollars, bond, or straight out-
Okay, so-
In FY19?
So, in the past, we've bonded for some road and bridge projects, and we discussed last year bonding for the Cedar Wopsey Bridge, and that is the one project that we are still looking at. And Kathy, maybe you can talk about the timeline on that and what we found out about that.
But didn't you indicate that we weren't going to bond for it in FY19?
Right, that's what, based on this timeline that we are now looking at, and how the bridge is going to be funded, we'll have some decisions to make. Previously, the board approved bonding for 4 million dollars on that, for that bridge. The total cost is going to be maybe 7 million, I can't remember.
7.7 to 7.5.
Right. And so there was going to be federal bridge money, and FM money, and a local match. So, go ahead, Kathy, I'll let you-
And you explained it the other day, and it makes sense. I mean, we wanted to spend some of that money upfront. Again, then, other than that project, is there any other projects would be asked for in FY19?
No.
Okay. And she was telling us, I don't know if you were hearing or not, about the various monies, that you're going to have to spend some of it upfront before we actually get to bonding?
Right.
Why don't we talk about that?
We would like to use our federal bridge money first, and we expect that the contract to be let by the Iowa DOT in December, so 10 months from now, 12 months from now. A year from now, the contract should probably be signed, and we'll know what the contract cost is. We would like to start spending the federal money right away, and Susan and I have been discussing that. By that point, we should have a good handle on what the fund balance or the secondary roads fund money is. It might be such that you do not have to bond for 4 million dollars, maybe it can be 3 million dollars.
But it wouldn't be till FY20?
Correct. So based on their timeline, it doesn't look like we will need to spend any bonded money until FY20. And I talked to Maggie Berger, and she said we would look then at, next fall, and where we'll have a better idea of the cost of the project, maybe also waiting until after they let the project, so that we know the cost and have an idea of how much, where our fund balance is at the time, so we can determine whether we want to use more of the local money in the secondary road fund to spend that down, as opposed to bonding, and then we can go ahead and bond, but our payment wouldn't be due until FY20, so we wouldn't need to do it this year.
Plus, you indicated that possibly the first payment or so could come out of-
Right.
Money.
Right, because we have built up a bit of fund balance in the secondary roads debt service fund, so.
We have a replacement of the grader-
Yes.
On the bigger, bigger expenditure, 320,000.
Yes, we'd like to-
The price that we paid for the three last year that was under that, wasn't it?
Yes, the price for an individual motor grader, when we purchased three, was about 289,000 dollars last year. So we're- So we're not, we assume that a single mortar grader will cost more than that.
What's the problem with the oh-five?
So the, I believe the handout I gave you last week, we, we may have switched mortars. The, the number three mortar grader is a two thousand and seven. It doesn't have, it only has sixty-nine hundred hours, but it is showing very high metal contents in the transmission fluid and the oil. We're just worried that we're going to have to be replacing a transmission and an engine at a cost of seventy thousand dollars. We, plus Wayne's telling me that the hinge pins, and that's the portion of the mortar grader where the articulation occurs, that those are bad. And we, we would like to retire this unit, this number three unit with the purchase of it.
Is that due to, what, is there anything it's attributed to? Not being an expert on it, it looks like it might be the driver that might be not driving it right?
So you mean the hinge pins or the...
The whole thing? Is, or is this, is this something that's happened before with the...
As you know, we've had quite a history of, of high metal contents in our, in our transmission fluids.
And Deer won't stand behind it? What, didn't stand behind it? It's, I guess it's ten years old now.
We have had, we've been working with them. They've, our new mortars, we're purchasing with an eight-year warranty on them, so we're hoping we get the majority of the life.
What's your plans this time if this was approved for bidding?
So we would again ask for the eight-year warranty or the maximum warranty. Right now it's ninety-six months, I think. So we would like to purchase a new mortar grader, we would ask for that.
Does that disqualify any vendor?
No, we, there are currently two vendors, as you know, Caterpillar and John Deere and we...
Is that it, the two?
Yes, we would like to receive bids from both of them.
What's the other one we got?
A Volvo.
They don't make those anymore?
They are currently not making mortars for this United States construction market.
Now, this one here, if it's approved again, are you writing the specs more tightly or open? Because you had a lot of discussion on steering wheel or not steering wheel?
We will, the, the operators, they like the joysticks that the brand-new mortars have. Those are working out well. I think once they've gotten used to them, those are working out well for them. We will make sure that both party, both companies can bid this product.
Does Deer make a joystick?
Yes, that's, that's what we just received. The three new mortars have a small steering wheel, kind of like a gaming steering wheels. What, I've been told it's a smaller steering wheel, but the primary controls are the...
Also, they do have the sticks like the Caterpillar.
Right.
Because you do remember a few years ago, your guys wanted steering wheels and you said it was a safety factor so they could stand up, not using the joysticks. And now we're, we've kind of gone three hundred and sixty degrees.
And we've gotten a younger workforce.
So, and I can appreciate that because we want what's ever safe out there, but we can't buy equipment to match an individual employee that's going to either be here today and gone tomorrow. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
In order to have Deer and Cat both bid, they have to have joysticks because Cat is one way from a steering wheel.
Never had one, they didn't back then, but at that time, they were low bid and she refused them because they had joysticks and their guys wanted a steering wheel. Now we're...
The other way around.
Other way around. Does Deer make the same thing as Caterpillar then as far as the joystick?
Yes, now they do.
So you're able to get that part two?
Yes.
And our new ones got them too?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't think they did. I thought that was one of the hangups again.
No, they have a man that...
What, this is actually what, ten years old? Is that usually the norm longevity? It sure seemed like we used to keep graders longer, were they made better then or...
We can get ten thousand hours out of the engine and that's what we're kind of striving for. This one, we really don't have problems with engines, but for some reason this one's failing.
Transmissions or engines?
Can't see stick in seventy, eighty thousand dollars in the machine, that's all. So we just, we pulled it off as a spare and one of the main line graders that I want to replace is going to have over ten thousand hours on it if we give them a new one.
What's trade-in value on these?
A Deer, about forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand? And you think the cost, the reason you got it higher than the ones we just bought is because you're buying a single or...
Most, yeah, most likely. And in talking with other counties, that two ninety, three hundred range is very common.
I would think it'd be beneficial, if possible, it may not be, to kind of go with one brand for your mechanics and stuff and parts on hand and so forth. But unfortunately, we have to bid them and go that route.
So will the, you proposed switching to the number three grader. The number eleven you're showing at ninety-one hundred hours?
Right.
Is that going, is that going to be the next one then?
That'll be the next one when you trade it off.
And you'll keep it in reserve or...
Yes, it's, it's used as a spare machine right now.
Is that a Caterpillar or Deer?
Deer.
Right, our fleet is only John Deere and the three.
We don't have any Volvo anymore?
We have three Volvos.
Oh, three Volvos? And they're what year?
Two thousand and five, or twelve.
Yes.
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve.
What are the averages for hours a year Wayne for a Cat?
Thousand hours.
So that's a year?
Yes.
And that's depending on the weather too, obviously.
Well, yeah.
I had a question too then Kathy, if there's no more on this one.
Sure.
The dump truck? Replacing, well, there's two of them, a truck for bridge accessories replacing in ninety-eight and there's an eighty-five.
Right, so the tandem we'd like to replace is currently a nineteen ninety-eight Ford. So it's twenty years old, it has almost half a million miles on it. The problem, I've told you this for a couple of years now, the problem with these Fords is the interior pieces, we just can't get pieces for them anymore. The tachometer no longer functions, which leads us to believe that maybe some of the other dash, the speedometer, some of the other dash components may stop working as well. The chassis on this unit is in bad condition. It's starting to show the rust jacking that I showed you photos of last year. So it's just time to replace this unit.
The, the ninety-eight and then the eighty-five you got coming up, usually when you see those years, those trucks aren't used on a daily basis. They're kind of more of a reserve and something. Well, this, okay, this one she's got up here on this one here, this eighty-five, how often do they use that? Obviously, if we've had it since eighty-five...
In the summer, they use it every day. In winter, it stays parked.
That's why sometimes a year is deceiving.
Sure.
What's, what's wrong with this one?
So it has the original engine, it's never had anything done to it. The mechanic says the power's just, you know, it's waning. It's, it's, it's an old truck. It's, it's starting to show some rust. This vehicle, when, when the crew is building the bridges, slab bridges, for example, this is the crew that goes out every day. They hauls out their welders, their ladders, everything they're using out there. Some of the H pile gets strapped onto the truck. And we would just like to replace this with, I guess, a smaller unit like this fifty-five hundred or the five fifty, the Ford five fifty, that type of chassis. A flatbed that would allow welder, the ladders. And then we would have a trailer that's pulling the H pile. That would be a safer way of transporting the long, the H pile out to the field rather than tying it onto the, the truck, the other truck I showed you.
What's the usage on the, the other one tandem?
The, that one is kind of a backline truck, so it's not used every day during the summer. It's just used off and on the whole, brought in concrete through the summer and it is a main truck in the winter time.
Wow.
Yes.
So we're asking that if we are able to purchase a new tandem dump truck, that it come with what we call a demo box? When we're hauling riprap out to our bridge sites, for example, or we need to haul busted up concrete, we like to have a sturdier box than many of these, the standard stainless steel box that we use during the winter. We do have one demo box in the fleet, but it's from twenty-ten or twenty-eleven.
That one will be one of the next ones to be traded that has a demo box currently.
Is a two oh-five cover snow?
Yes.
Equipment?
Yes.
There's any other questions on those two? On your, the next one would be your radio?
Yeah.
Upgrade?
Yes.
Question about Harris radios and then give some indication that you'd be tying into the current new radio system? You have down EMA radio system.
Yes, we, we would be tying, using that product, that radio that's available with the new system that the sheriff's using. We have sixty-five vehicles that have radios, so it would be the initial cost of buying the radios and then as we understand that there's an annual fee or monthly fee, annual fee associated with tying into the system to pay for the maintenance and operation of...
So that fifteen thousand, seven hundred is annual?
That's what EMA told us.
Annual, not monthly? And we need this why?
This is new? I mean, you haven't been, you've been operating under your own system and you purchased those radios?
Right, so we did purchase a radio system in twenty-twelve and the, the unit's momentum is the radio itself. That's being, that's no longer made. Raycom tells me, tells us that's no longer made, it's not supported by the factory, there's no software for it anymore. Eventually, they can, they can give us different radios that are compatible with our current system, but eventually we'll be at the point where the system has numerous different types of radios.
And obviously, if you're going to be looking into the county-wide public safety radio system, these are going to be digital radios?
Yes.
But they're not the caliber of the sheriff's, you know, like the sheriff is...
They're not going to be the three to four thousand dollar radio? And how many, again, did you say sixty?
Sixty-five vehicles have radios.
You got that many vehicles?
Sixty-five.
That, that would include all of the pickup trucks, the light, you know, the light pickup trucks. That is every vehicle we have, right? Has a radio? Yeah.
And you've researched the compatibility of using this reception? And our reception should be much better. You don't operate much with handheld units, you have mobile units?
Right, our, our units are in, are in the vehicles.
But you would not be using these radios as a GPS coordinate?
Right, so in speaking with the sheriff and Raycom, they said that that option is available on those radios, but it's not being used at this time. So I guess regardless of we were allowed to buy these radios or not, we would like to switch the Verizon AVL system. It's a much cheaper cloud-based system. A small unit's placed in every, all of our vehicles and then we'd be able to track those, our vehicles. And the dump trucks? Okay, not sixty-four, okay.
You probably said it Kathy, but I was going to say, so the benefit of using this system versus a different system? Why this decision was made to go to this radio system?
We felt that when it is time to replace our radios, we would like to take advantage of the system that's already been supported by, by you, by the board. And piggyback on top of that and we, we believe there'd be good support for the system if we need help with the radios or...
Kathy, do you, you know what your coverage percentage is now with the radio system you have now? Do you get, throughout the county, do you get ninety percent coverage or do you have any idea?
I would say a hundred percent.
Hundred percent?
I've not found any areas in the county that...
So you don't want it to go up from a hundred percent?
No.
Well, we did have a repeater go out, we only have one repeater, so when the repeater goes out, then we don't have any radio coverage, which the sheriff's system has six, I think, or six. More reliable in the long term.
So you have, you have, you operate off of one antenna? You'd be moving to seven antennas with new radio system?
Right.
Any other questions?
Yeah. On, on any other...
Cedar, what, you know, it says purchase if awarded?
Yes.
Grant money?
So this would be...
What would that be used for?
So we have...
Doesn't, doesn't Black County Conservation have one?
We, the one that we use, we're working in cooperation with Hawkeye Community College.
Oh, okay.
And it's actually their drill, but our people teach their students how to run it so we can use it whenever we want, so we don't actually own it.
Okay, good, there we could do that with that.
When we get done seeding a project, we have a, there's a window of time by, the DNR says that we need to get, this bare ground has to be seeded in fourteen days. So we need to get out there and seed, for example, when we put new culverts in or when we're putting our bridges in. That's done by us. A lot of our contract work will be the ones who actually do the seeding. We'll, we'll, we'll do that duty instead of having the contractor do it, so we do...
What do you pull it with?
So this, the smaller would be pulled by the ATV that we got through the IRVM program last year.
So why, why wouldn't that be part of the contract for the contractor to finish? That would be finished work, wouldn't it?
It could be, but we just think we can save money by doing it ourselves. We have had a few contracts, if it's a really large, for example, Kenfield Road, it was several miles of seeding, we just had the contractor do it.
I'd like, one thing with all this equipment, I'd like to see is a program set up for even the trucks and stuff. When they come in, that they're power washed once in a while. Don't we still, don't we have hot C's out there now?
We do, and every storm that we go through, we power wash. We have underbody wash to...
Every, every storm?
Every storm, unless they're back-to-back storms. But if we get a gap in there of two, three days, we're washing. It's just those trucks are held, they're held in the material all day long, sometimes seven days a week. They're just in that material. We can't do a much better job of washing, I mean...
I did, did look at their washing bay yesterday at the secondary roads facility in Longfellow. And they did have a truck in there. And I think along with the new lighting, they have lighting tilted so that visibility around that truck is, is quite impressive. Particularly in, in the entire facility, when we upgraded the lighting there. It's made a real difference in that facility.
They wash your car?
It was your car?
Did, yeah.
Wiped down the door sills?
They missed a few spots, but...
Figure that's why you're out there. Go ahead Kathy.
If we don't receive the grant through the IRVM program or not, we probably wouldn't purchase this.
When are you knowing of this?
The applications are due May or June?
June, and then they award it in October?
Yeah.
So if you don't get it, then we'll go back and...
Yeah, and if we do receive it, we would pay the, we're projecting we'd pay twenty-four hundred. And the IR, the IRVM program has some pretty specific guidelines on all of the equipment that people are allowed to buy, so we, we have to go by their recommendations on what to purchase.
And the ninety-six hundred dollars is reflected in IRVM?
Would it be cheaper to buy one of those sprayers, like to spray it, spray it down? You don't really got that? Hydro?
Hydracer. We do have a hydracer, but the...
DOT, correct.
The C does not establish at here as well, without...
Tom will attest to that.
So with the C drill, as you know, it, it actually drills into the top surface of the dirt and...
Takes more care, hydro C takes more care too.
Yeah.
Water.
If it's dry out and the C doesn't grow with crap, then it's going back or redoing.
At least you put this in the ground.
If it's fairly dry out, it'll still grow.
Go ahead Kathy.
Moving on to the speed trailer, this is something that we've, drivers, I think, are getting pretty accustomed to seeing these speed trailers either in work zones, or when you enter a community, asking you to slow down, they may be used at events, we'd like to do the same thing, we're working in conjunction with the sheriff, they'd like to purchase the same type of unit, so that collectively, there's two of them. If there's a, an event, for example, that, when three-eighty was closed a couple weeks ago after the deputy's car got hit, maybe these trailers could have been hauled out on some of the county roads and given more direction to people on which way, which way to travel, for example. They, we're thinking of using them in some of our subdivisions where we get, we occasionally get calls from folks up in the Beaver Hills area, for example, or in Washburn, that people are going too fast, you need to lower the speed limit.
That's not really your responsibility, that should be the sheriff's department.
Well, we'd like to work in conjunction.
I mean, if he wants to purchase, does he have one now?
No, we have...
I, I think if he wants to purchase one, he can come to the board, but I don't think this is a necessity for the engineers department.
Well, we think it would be very useful in some maybe high-trafficed events, we've talked to Conservation Board about some of their, some of the weekends when it's very popular that people are on tubing or on some of the rivers, and there gets to be quite a few cars congesting the county roads, for example, on Cedar Wopsey, that we think we could haul these up there on both ends of the bridge and say, you know, congestion ahead or low down or...
It's still a sheriff's obligation that years, I think this is more of a want than a need.
We would store them both at the shooting range, and that way, if the sheriff needed them, they could have access to them, or if we needed them, we could have access to them. They are used quite a bit in work zones nowadays to get traffic to slow down, we, we've seen that as a possibility as well.
And so that list cost of thirteen thousand is for the two vehicles, for the two?
It's for one.
Trailer or just the one?
Yeah, it'd be for our purchasing.
Okay.
The one. Moving on to the hoop building, we would like to place a hoop building similar to the facility we have at LaPorte, the LaPorte shop, and now, of course, the Longfellow shop. This would be more similar in size to the LaPorte City shop, their hoop building there, about forty feet by forty-eight feet wide. This would allow the four trucks, the two trucks at Elk Run plus two more to not have to drive all the way into Waterloo to, to get them the sand and salt.
I thought we had one up there.
No.
Longfellow.
We do have one at Longfellow.
Yeah, I know, Longfellow, yeah.
Yeah.
LaPorte City too.
Yeah.
And then the last thing, we've had a suggestion by an employee that to do things better, that currently when we are constructing our bridge slabs, we'll use, you can see those yellow arrows, those are how we pick up the slab, the crane attaches to those, they're attached to the crane by those cables, and then they're able to be picked up, and then they're just cut off. Well, we're running out of that crane cable, and perhaps a better way to do it is to use these, these swivel hoist rings, where you're just embedding the, a bolt, and then this would thread into it. These would be reusable, we would need a set out on, out on the grade where the new bridge is being placed, as well as a set at the shop, so they can be picked up, and then they have to be set out in the field. They do have to be able to hold forty thousand pounds, so four of them would have to hold forty thousand pounds, so they would have to be heavy-duty. So we are looking at, we would like to try something like that, but we're estimating five hundred dollars apiece for those.
It's a safety factor.
Yeah, so we're... Can I answer any questions about any of our requests, or?
The only thing I'll say is, some of them are like this here, is, I mean, it's an over-brainer, it's a safety thing, it's just on the news the other day where that slab broke, they were trying to pick it up, and it broke, so if this works, better, fine. The only concern I have is we have such a large capital list every year, million dollars this year, over a million last year, and I know some of the supervisors have looked at some of these numbers, and they look a little high. I know a lot of times you'll come back middle of the year and say, I have this left over, and I don't see that as leftover. If your grader comes in at two-hundred-and-eighty-five, fine, you bought the grader, but that money's back in there, it's not leftover money to be spending on something else, especially when we went through the budget and spent a million dollars on capital projects. So that's the only beef I had, because it goes on all, all year. I got leftover money from here, leftover, well, it's easy to do then, just twenty percent everything above, get it cheaper, and you can say you got extra money, and it's not really extra money.
We do try to give you an accurate...
Understand.
...estimate of what these items will cost. Sometimes we're, we give it our best shot, and the price may go up, or we didn't think about, maybe didn't think everything about the product, or the, so we may have missed something, but we do try.
What, what was your indication on the three-hundred-and-twenty thousand grader?
That that's probably, hopefully, a little high, but I don't know how much high, it might be twenty thousand high, or it might be ten thousand high, I don't, I don't know. We, of course, would like to be a little bit high rather than a little bit less, because that's when we are asking you to say, hey, we're ten thousand...
Well, that, that's fine there then, but I mean, it'd make any difference if you go the other way and say you got extra money and you're gonna spend it on something else, we just went through a budget process.
But we can only ask you to be as accurate as you can at the time, I think with any kind of budgeting.
I understand, I'm just telling you what's been going on. You've seen it, I've sent emails on it numerous times. And you continue to buy stuff, that's what the budget's for, you budget the stuff, you buy it, you move on, you just don't sit there and keep buying.
I don't think we just keep buying.
Yeah, we do, we do. Anything else for Kathy? No. Thank you, thank you Kathy. Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. Next up, IT.
Next up is IT. Abby, can you put my screen back up? Okay. The IT budget, um, the summary, as you can see, we actually, looking at a slight decrease in operating expenses, as mainly due to the, the decrease in the, the contract with ACIS, and then there's a slight decrease in the amount of capital, but Kim can talk about that, I think it was due to, last year we purchased a server for, for around fifty thousand, but not too much, really no significant changes beyond that, so, and then we can look at the capital list here, but I'll, I'll let Kim talk about, just in general.
When you said the decrease of ACIS, you're talking about the past one?
Right, so a year ago, when we were doing the budgeting, we were still estimating at, the twenty-three thousand...
The actual contract was less than what...
Did you allow for anything this year when it comes due in May?
Well, I checked at Dave Hanson, and the, the little handout I gave you, sent, emailed you yesterday, talked about that, and I do have hard copies of that, if you would like it today. He does not anticipate at this time having an increase, I also talked to him about, did you guys? I did talk to him about a few things that maybe we could bring back in-house, like password resets and that kind of thing, and maybe that would decrease it a little bit more, but it's my understanding that that should not increase. I mean, yes, and that's the biggest thing, is our storage device, that was a fifty thousand dollar item, we, that's good for like five years, so that's why our, my costs are a little bit less for capital.
Your reduction in revenue?
Well, and that's just a typo, if you can see that I, I just didn't even see that until I got the paperwork, and then it was kind of past the point. It really should have been just what it was last year, as far as that number.
I'll correct that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see it till when I was going through your information, so...
If, I'll bring up the list of capital here, hold on.
Okay. And most of this is pretty standard things that I usually have every year. The one item that's a little bit more expensive than has been in the past is laptops, DVDs don't seem to be included in them as much anymore, and with the county attorney's office and looking at interviews and that kind of thing, they need DVD players included, and so I put that in a little higher, just because I haven't been able to find something that suits their needs for the two that they've asked for, for this year. So that may be high, maybe I'll find another brand. We've tended to use Dell computers for things, because we've, you know, been pretty satisfied with, you know, they work pretty good, we don't usually have as much problems with that. Let's see, like I said, I don't have a lot of odd things in here, I mean, anything that I don't usually have. Upgrading office software, buying some more scanners for our document imaging software, a lot of those are due to things that we're trying to do, and one of the goals on the next sheet talks about strategic options, or from our 2028 plan has got the codes for that, and so one of our big pushes is the SharePoint, the document imaging software, those are the two big things that are, you know, projects for next year. And we started the SharePoint, but we expect to expand it to other departments throughout the year, and the document manager, the Rico, our Ford is to Rico, we're in the process of getting that, the statement of work completed, and we'll have the assessor's office and the departments, hopefully, that are currently using it over, and then adding more, departments like HR, and the engineer's office is, you know, has a big project that they want to do. The one thing I have in the second column is, we had looked at what Tyler Technology, that's New World System, was bought them out, they have their own document imaging software, but at this point, we're really gonna see if we can't make the Rico, or not Rico, DocuWare work for it, so, but I put those numbers in there so that you'd see that it's kind of pricey, and then we'd have the migration on top of it, but it might be something that, depending on how the DocuWare works with the New World interface, it's that interface that's the issue, it's not DocuWare, so...
The printers for, so is, did the auditor or treasurer, one of them have a printer in their budget?
No, I don't think we've seen any printers.
Okay, I thought somebody talked about one.
Oh. Speaker talked about that in May in the near future.
Oh, but it wasn't in there.
But it's not in this budget, because it's, has a lot of usage.
Yeah, now, I, I go through, I meet with each of the departments that I buy for, and want, you know, to make sure that I've got pretty much everything covered.
Kathy said she did.
So, um...
Well, I don't...
Right, so Secondary Roads and Mental Health, if they needed something, they will put those in their budget, because those are paid out of their own fund.
Different funds.
So Secondary Roads had monitor replacements and a, a big, did you have a big?
Plotter printer.
Plotter printer and...
And I guess I would bring this up, because I just had some news about this, our HIPAA, you know, that's something that we have that risk assessment for this year yet, and hopefully there won't be a lot of change with that, but that is something that's kind of maybe things we need to address before the end of next fiscal year, as far as security, so...
What does that mean?
Well, with the risk assessment, they may find some things that we need to upgrade or fix, and I'm not saying that we do, but that's part of the reason we're doing it, is just to make sure that we have every...
Hardware, or software?
Well, yeah, it might be some more...
Procedures or...
Right, procedures, and we may end up needing some more help from a vendor to make sure that we have all of our policies reviewed. Part of the problem now is with the, it's not a committee, because the board didn't appoint us, but there's a group of us that get together, and there are a lot of new people that are on the, in the group this year, that probably now, because of change in personnel, that we don't probably have the experience or the background in HIPAA compliance that we could, so...
When, when was that updated?
We updated in two thousand fourteen, yeah, I'll have to check, but I think it was fourteen, and we really need to review it again, and we used the ISAC to help set it up in the first place, and we're looking at possibly using ISAC again to kind of review with that, and see what we need to do for training for HIPAA.
Does anybody, who governs our compliance on that?
Well, that's part of the, well, I shouldn't say it's a problem, I'm the HIPAA Privacy Officer, and I'm the HIPAA Security Officer, and, yeah, we, we, you know, it's, it probably is a full-time job to start out with, and I'm doing it as we have, you know, I could spend more time with that, is what I'm getting at, if I had it.
If you're an outside agency that monitors that?
Oh, um, yeah, oh, Department of Human Services is I think what it is, I'd have to double-check that for sure.
GIS server, is that a replacement?
Yes, yep.
And will that enhance our, what's your plans for upgrading GIS?
Right, the server that we have for the actual ARC GIS server, which would be the web server that we're gonna push out data to, is newer, this is the base where the data is stored, so it's really just a replacement because of age, but we do have a server that we bought last year, that is the part that's gonna push it out to the web and make it available, that's, so they work together, one has the data and is maintained here in the courthouse, and the other is really just pushing it out.
So does it enhance our GIS capabilities, or?
Well, we...
Do the public what they can see, or?
Um, eventually, yes, when push comes to shove, yes, it'll, we'll be, we'll be able to, it's not, it'll be a faster machine that works better and that kind of thing, and we'll be able to... it'll be a faster machine that works better and that kind of thing, and we'll be able to create layers on it that can be pushed out to the public.
Thank you.
In your operating budget, um, Kim, I noticed you have, I mean, probably insignificant in the size of the dollars, but when you have the training and education, that budget item was up about thirty-seven percent. Is there particular training?
Well, you know, we haven't had a lot in there, so I increased it so that we could send people away for training, if we could find something that we wanted, and so that's a case where I don't have something specific in mind, but as we're, um.
People, who?
My, I, my tech staff. And the other part of what the goals too is, um, checking online, and I've got some samples of some IT basic training that I'm hoping we can have set up for staff and have a, um, a survey to say, hey, we need training on Excel, or we'd like more training on Outlook. And the, and the training for the SharePoint is gonna be a big deal, too, so that may be well where that ends up being, because I'm hoping to have our staff be more involved in the transfer of knowledge from, um, the company that we're working with right now on that.
You talked about usage of SharePoint in other departments.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any type of identified timeline or thoughts on that?
Well, the company that's actually doing the installation is working on it right now. We talked about the fact that we'd still be able to get started with the Health Department yet in January. Um, so I think it's gonna be more of, that, well, that first project is gonna be where staff learns how to, to work with it in the first place, and then we'll be able to start working with other departments. So I would, you know, I'd like to know how the first one go, to see how difficult it ends up being.
So it will be, sounds like up and running for Health Department over there.
Yep. And I talked to Nefis about that.
With some of this training, uh, that we're, we're gonna be looking at, is there a possibility that we can get them trained where we can start bringing back, everything back into the courthouse?
Well, that is, you know, a, a thing that, a thing that I would like to see happen.
Yeah, I'd like, well, it should have happened a long time ago. It's just seemed like lately, there's just been too many things saying, well, we can't do it, because we can't figure it out. Uh, another example, yesterday, Dana, I got an email, and it was from Kat Hansen. And I said, what's this? And she goes, well, the calendar was set up by her for future meetings, and we can't change it. Nobody can figure it out.
Oh, I had, I haven't been.
And I thought, well, it's kind of ridiculous.
Yeah, well, I don't know who she talked to. She hasn't talked to me about it, so I will follow up with her.
Anyway, that's what she's using right now until all those dates are used up.
Okay, well, let me check on that.
Yeah, to maintain the AS four-hundred for this fiscal year.
Yes, yeah, well, and, um, as I included in there, in my little statement too, is, um, and you, every, I mean, you're very well aware of our situation with Thompson Reuters. I've pretty much given them an ultimatum when push comes to shove, that we need to have something done, you know, know that we're a priority with them, and I guess, if at the end of January, when I get my report back from them, I may need to come back to the courthouse or the board and say, what do I do about getting out of that contract and maybe doing another?
How much money do you got of ours?
Not, nothing. Nope, we haven't paid them anything.
We have a full-time employee dedicated to AS four-hundred?
Well, we have to, um, in one of the sheets, it's got how many transactions and how many minutes of use are in the four-hundred. So we have, you know, several departments that are still actively using that machine, so there are people. Part of the staff job is doing the things that need to happen with the four-hundred.
How old is that server?
Um, I don't, I don't know that. I'd have to check that out. But it is a problem, because the software support is done with that. I've been working with proactive solutions and have been for a year at least, talking about what, you know, what our options were, but it's finally happened, so.
ACES won't work on it, will they?
No.
Tool, tool for their use, but not for ours, it's a workhorse.
Yeah, well, and like you've said before, you know, counties, there's two, lots of counties. Some use the four-hundred, and some use servers, so. But like you, I've also said, and I'm gonna knock on wood if I had it, um, that machine is a workhorse, you know. It doesn't fail, we don't have to reboot it.
But I think its time has come.
Oh, I know, and I, I'm, but I'm saying that with God on our side, it'll last till I've got everything off. And like you said, we, I, I've made it clear to Thompson Reuters that we need to open up or shut up, so.
What would be the delay if we switch companies, and is there another company out there that can provide that?
Well, we don't have a lot of choices, we, you know, so what we've done so far with the data conversion is out the window, and we were to the point of, like you said, or, you know, to you guys earlier, um, that we were pretty clean with our migration, and we thought we were ready to go when they had this last delay, so, or the delay in, in.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Anything else?
That's all we have for today.
All we got for today? Entertaining a motion for adjournment?
So moved?
Second. Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.